I'd like to call the order of the committee council meeting in January 2018. Sandy Kuzprow.
Yandello.
Here.
Boko.
Present.
Jaworski.
Here.
Kowski.
Here.
Levon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Saloto.
Here. Approval of council meeting minutes, December 18, 2017.
I would like to request that the new members, Ms. Boko, Ms. Yandello, Ms. Saloto, and Mr. Sackus be excused from voting since they were not current members at that time.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Kowski, second by Councilman Jaworski, to allow Councilman Yandello, Councilwoman Boko, Councilman Sackus, and Councilwoman Saloto to abstain from the council meeting minutes of January 18, December 18, 2017. Discussion? Please, you guys will vote yes on this motion or no. Sandy Kuzprow.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boko.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski, Jip, Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
To approve the minutes of December 18, 2017.
I'll say it.
Motion by... She's second here. Sorry.
Oh, you have to say it.
Yeah. Motion by Councilperson, Councilwoman Kowski, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, to approve the council minutes of December 18, 2017. Discussion? You guys will abstain if you want to. Sandy Kuzprow.
Yandello.
Staying.
Boko.
Staying.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski, Jip, Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Staying.
And Saloto.
Staying.
Approval of council meeting minutes of January 2, 2018.
Make a motion for the new meetings of January 2, 2018.
I can say it.
Moved by Councilwoman Yandello, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to approve the council meeting minutes of January 2, 2018. Discussion? Sandy Kuzprow.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boko.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
And Saloto.
Yes.
Reports of communications from the mayor's safety director.
Good evening. First off, thank you, Nick, Call of Studio 23, for recording the meeting, and Councilman Sackus for organizing everything. Really do appreciate that. Talked with Susan Happy, school board director, last week. In the past, they have held meetings between some folks on council and some folks in school board every quarter just to make sure each other party is on the same page. So we set that meeting for the first quarter, January 26 at 7:30 a.m. If anybody's able to attend, you're more than welcome to. If, you know, that time doesn't work, you guys can always let me know when the good time does work, with day that works for going forward. And of course, if not, send me any thoughts, questions, or concerns that I could bring to them on that day. We have meetings on the 26 at 7:30 at the school board office there on Rockefeller Road. Charter review commission, I will have the appointments next meeting. I've reached out to everyone over the weekend just to confirm, and still waiting to hear back from a few folks to confirm their interest in availability. Talked with our city engineer last week about a couple vacant city-owned properties around Lloyd and Clayton, and then off of Bridal Town. It was an old posed housing development. And after that conversation, just, you know, pulled him to send that information out to the property developers, just to see if there's any initial interest while we're working through everything else. It hasn't been sent out in a while, I don't think it was currently listed for sale, so just to put it out there, see if we get any interest, and then we can go from there. I would like to call an executive session after this meeting to discuss the wage reopen or update. And I talked to Chief Powers, he is here, glad he made it on time, from Columbus. Then I'd also like to call for a finance committee meeting at 6:30 on the 20 seconds prior to the next council meeting, if that works for everybody, to discuss the budget. And, other than that, that's... I do have... Why does it be placed into committee, but I need to make an amendment to the agenda? Okay, I'll hold on then. That's all I have for my reports, from the mayor's safety director.
Any questions for the mayor's safety director? See, now, reports and communications from the director of law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. All council members, both new members and current members, I did put some packets, hopefully you all got them in your mailbox, about, some stuff about the law for, like, officials of the city. In the next, probably month or so, you'll be getting more stuff from me, and I'm trying to make the transition as easy as possible. In addition, discuss this a little further down a little bit. There are certain requirements you have for education during your term. There are some training seminars coming up. Like I said, I'll be getting more information regarding this to you, to hopefully ease the transition here. As the mayor spoke of, this charter review commission does need to be appointed, and obviously be available for anything procedural on that, once the mayor does establish that commission. It's been done in the past, so, you know, procedurally, how that double four available helps you with that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, I know that Building Commissioner Sack has an item that he's going to ask to be placed into the committee tonight. You probably have that in your packets as well, too. And I would ask that, in addition to the items that he has listed, since it's dealing with the same ordinance, the council would consider adding to the item reconsidering exceptions to the sewer di test, since it does, in being in statute. So I'll let Building Commissioner Sack make the presentation, but if that item could be added into that as well, too.
And that's all I have. Any questions for... Any questions for the director? Communications from the council president, I do not have any communications additions or amendments to the agenda.
I have items to add into committees.
Do you have any specific titles, like, new business B?
Just a couple different, like, reevaluating the property development behind Pine Ridge, that needs to go, I talked to the engineer about, that needs to go into a committee, one of the options.
Behind Pine Ridge? Or, like, Bridal Town?
Correct, Bridal Town, yeah. Parking issue on Buena Vista, you know, by Nell's Park there, I talked with Councilwoman Boko about this, I believe you already mentioned that to Service Director. And even when I was campaigning, I was on that street talking to folks, they brought up the issue, and then I saw it happening, cars are speeding past, it's so narrow over there, little kids running around in a car right there, very, very unsafe. I mean, I think we should make that a no parking street, but that needs to be discussed.
Will we have any property behind Bridal Town, B and D, new business, parking issue, Nell's Park, C, the new business?
Okay.
Anything else?
And it's one more for now, exploring board docs for these meetings, which is a paperless, paperless system, so it's like Google Docs, for municipalities and school boards, to help us try and stay on some of those paper costs.
Okay, we'll explore more docs as I and D, new business.
Valid.
Councilwoman Boko.
I think to add an I and D, if I could. Exploring, accepting some RFPs, or request proposals from some economic development firms, certainly in cost, if anything, to do that. But I think it would be interesting to pull some RFPs, some of the major firms together to present to us some of their ideas.
We'll add, new business E, RFP for economic development firms. Is there any other additions or amendments to the agenda? Now, I'm going to move into the administrators, please chief vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to my monthly report, a couple things I'd like council to be aware of. We had a house worker and a COVID court, suspect was arrested. After he was arraigned, we took him out to the county, he had swallowed half a bag of cotton balls. So, we ended up having to take him to the hospital, probably had to foot the bill for that. I mentioned that the heroin problem's going strong. Last year, we had 12 people with, let's see, that overdose, total self-harm. We had our first heroin overdose on January 3rd. Twenty-six-year-old male, he lives on Lloyd Road. And two days later, on January 5th, we had our second heroin overdose death on Eastern Avenue Street. I told you that the hiring process is a full swing for the dispatchers. We have 29 applications back, we're taking applications till the end of this week. We're giving a test on the 22nd for the dispatch personnel. One dispatcher is what, and the other one will be leaving at the vet door. I'd also mention the civil service examination. We need two tests, one for sergeant and one for patrolman. Sergeant Nassi is retiring, he's actually off, he's not at state, he's still on the force until March 29th. Typically, we get this process started now, because there's a six-week, eight-week study period, you have to have the study before the examination. So I want you to be aware of that. And there's some fees associated with that. I look at the temporary budget, we don't have any money in there. So I'll call that your attention. I'm going to guess we'll need probably $20,000 in that account, just want to start this process before then. I recommend that you do that, start the process as soon as you can. I did not have a conversation with Jim P, I mean, I talked to him, mentioned that I needed, before I get started, and I need council approval to go forward with that.
Entertained a motion for $20,000?
I think they've got a...
Into what line I had, again, sir?
101, 712, 51019, Civil Service Commission expenses. That case for the written test, and then we use an assessment center, there's a fee for that, you can let me do that.
This is for dispatchers, right?
No, no. That's for sergeant and patrolman.
Right. Can you break that down for us? What's the cost for the sergeant, what's the cost for the patrolman? Do you know that, man? I'd be curious to know. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to transfer $20,000 to the civil service test line, civil service expense line.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilwoman Kowski, to transfer $20,000 from the general fund to the Civil Service Commission Expense Fund for sergeant and patrolman level entry exam. Discussion? Can I start it all?
The civil service line is in the general fund, we can add it.
Okay. Just to put the addition of $20,000 into that, that line, I have. Thank you. Sandy Kuzprow.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boko.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Saloto. I'm sorry, Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
I have one last item. Since we do dispatch, we also do all the paging for all the employees in the city. So for example, we have critical incident notifications. If you guys want to get notified about serious damage, disruption of public service, fires, any kind of significant event, I'll use your cell phone number and your provider. I have a piece of paper here, that my secretary wrote up, you'd like to put your cell phone number on here, and the name of your provider, I'll let you use this. That's all that I would have to say.
Have any questions for the police chief? Thank you, Chief Vice. Fire Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In addition to my monthly report, I have to make council aware of a couple things. First off, we have a meeting scheduled, or walkthrough scheduled, with ABB. They're representative on New York, the building owners coming into town, and their intention is to close the facility and shut down all the utilities. They're interested in making sure they do that properly and up to code. We will assist them with that, but it's our understanding, as of the end of the month, all electric, water, and everything will be off to that facility, including alarms and monitors, that type of thing. The building will be empty, as per part of the fire code. Secondly, we also have a hiring in progress, we're working on our full-time guys, but we also hire our part-time people throughout the year, which costs us some money. Typically, we take this out of our budget, it's going to be reflected in my budget this year, once council sees that. It costs us about $6,000, just making you aware of that, so that we, at the time, we can discuss that a little bit shorter, but we're in the process of hiring part-time people also. And we desperately need those people, because four of our people have gone on for full-time jobs recently, and it's impacting us a little bit. Council President, are we still going to have a finance committee meeting next week?
Yes, sir, I will announce that during committee reports.
Okay, great. And then finally, as Chief Vice spoke, you know, we've had these overdoses the last week, and I have to tell you, there is an impact to our firefighter paramedics. You know, we deal with it, and, you know, we had a 26-year-old pass away, and a 19-year-old girl pass away the other day. And, you know, that's somebody's son or daughter. And as you work on it, especially with my older firefighters, that could be their son or daughter. It's terrible, and it does have an impact on my firefighter paramedics, in that we see this on a regular basis. The general consensus amongst the public is, well, we have Narcan, we can save them, we can bring them back. I have to tell you, that doesn't always work. Matter of fact, it works sometimes, but not all the time in America, very few times it does work, because by the time you get these overdoses, it's way too far. So at the end of the day, when you hear these overdoses, and it just seems like numbers, just keep in mind that somebody's son or daughter, you know, brother or sister, potentially mother or father, and I think it impacts our entire community, just not the general family. So it's more than just the number. And Council President, that's all I have, then.
Any questions for Fire Chief, or Councilwoman Kowski?
Just going to say, I attended the funeral today for the 26-year-old that died, and I can tell you, it was very heartbreaking.
It is. It's a terrible, terrible thing.
How many were last year?
Chief? Twelve that passed away. You know, obviously, we brought some back, but it's, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Is there a lot that we don't know?
Any other questions for the Fire Chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. Finance Director Dolls.
Just wanted to let council know that I am working on December's financial reports, and closing the little logo, but we'll get there.
Along with the mayor calling finance meeting on January 26, 6:30, I'd also like to have the rest of council? Or 15 of us? I'd also like to discuss the train, using the sort of financial reports, show the new four, for new council people, what those reports are, and what they all mean. It's a different, it's not easy to fill with the first report, and you know exactly what it all says, unencumbered, encumbered balances like that. So if there's time before the meeting, would you like to read the tour, or how the report reads, and what it all means, for the new council people, please? Any other questions for the finance director? Thanks, Ms. Dolls. Engineer Hamika.
Thank you, Council President. One thing to add to my written report, I received a letter from the Federal Emergency Management Agency dated January 2nd. Basically, it confirms our letter of map revision that took us years to acquire from them, but we're over there at the, at the tip of Buena Vista, where Nell's Park is, so that we can, that flood plain is now officially reduced, and those residents can now not have to pay that flood insurance. So it's all good news.
Any questions for the engineer?
Pete, sir.
Councilman Jaworski.
Is there anything else that we have to do for those residents, or is it just about...
We've notified them, I've sent them, I've sent them all letters, saying that this was going to be effective December 23rd, I think it was, and this is just the official letter saying it's all, all stopped.
Any other questions for the city engineer? Thank you, Chief Vice. Service Director Dan Rosha.
Thank you, Mr. President. All is well in the service department. This week, we are going to be setting up for Winter Fest. We have had a couple snow downs, we've been out there this morning, a little bit, it's quite a bit of ice, so we did have to use a little more salt than we anticipated usually, but salt-wise, we're doing pretty good, we're concerned that we can. I do want the council to be aware, I think I mentioned this before, we do have a guy retiring January 19th, with 31 years to service. He's a very important partner of the service department, I hope that Council and the mayor will consider hiring somebody to replace him during the budget talks. Other than that, that could be the report.
Any questions for Service Director? Councilwoman Kowski.
I had a resident call me in regards to the hopeful placement of a stop sign on Elmwood and Woodway. Said there's a lot of beer, this is...
I will be happy to take a look at it, and then, as you know, I have to look at the safety director to...
I'll drive by, is that a freeway stop there, or, you know?
On Woodway.
I'll be out and about tomorrow, I'll stop by and take a look.
Is that a roadway in Old Town?
Elmwood and Woodway.
Used to be a stop sign.
Any other questions? Councilman Jaworski.
Joe, I don't know if this will be for you, maybe it would be for Pete, but it seems that Ridge Road, the last week, week and a half, the joints have just...
The section on the bend there, and it's just... That's really bad. We should call ODIC and have them come out and ride that, because, no. When we paved Euclid Avenue the year before, we put in a specification for what's called a paving fabric. Okay, we got that in there. The year after, when we paved Ridge Road, I put the same specification for fabric in, but ODIC, they did the plans, and they said, no, we can't do that. I said, no, you don't understand, this is good stuff. No, no, we can't do that, they wouldn't let us put it in. Hence, we have to fucking crack the nets, like riding down Law Road. Yeah. It's freestyle cycles, you know, water gets in there, freezes, things pop up.
We're hoping someone will go back, once, you know, comes springtime, we have a couple cities that have been on Lakewood Boulevard also, that it's just heating bad. Well, we're hoping someone will go back.
When do we expect the state to come back and do Ridge again?
I'm working on that for Ridge, Euclid, and Lakewood right now.
Any other questions for the Service Director? Building Commissioner, Building Commissioner Sack.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In addition to my monthly report, a few things I'd like to be placed into committee, it's section 1303.7, that's the di test ordinance. I was with the mayor and myself, and wanted to change a few things, and also the law director added, and also, an exception to the di test also, for number four on that. And if we could place it in the appropriate committee and schedule a meeting.
You will put change of ownership revisions, chapter 1303.70 slash exceptions to sewer di test into the legislation of the local committee. Anything else?
You should have my end of year report, there's some questions on that, before you call me, you know, answer anything. That's all I have.
Any questions for the Building Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sack. Recreation Director Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just one item to add to my monthly report, I'd like to invite everyone here to our annual Winter Fest at Greenwich Golf Course on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. I don't know what kind of weather we're going to have, but we're still going to have fun anyways, we've got inside-outside activities planned, still looking for a chilly entry or two. If anyone is interested in doing that, give us a holler, we'll put you on our list, and you can win a trophy to be the best chilly in Lakewood, at least for the year, so, I'd like to invite everyone out for that, it's usually a fun time. All ages and free.
Any questions for the Recreation Director? Councilman Sack.
Do you have any volunteers?
We do. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Recreation Director? Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'll move into audience participation. Ben, we'd like to address the council or administration, please stand, state your name and address for the Service Director.
Good evening. Don Muster, 29105 Ridge Road. I'm encouraged by the mayor's proposal to adopt board docs, having been through this process, and we use it quite effectively in the school district, we've been using it for about six months. The beauty of it is, all the paper on the table is missing. The challenge will be to have wireless available here, so that the people can also see what you're seeing.
Do you all have devices for that? Did you each have your own device for that, your tablet?
We each have a laptop on the table in front of us, that's one of the downsides, because people tend to look at the laptop instead of the audience, but we got over that as well. But the paper savings, it was $100,000 for us, it's incredible. And the time savings for the processing that the people have, so I encourage council to adopt that as quickly as possible. One other, I want to call it humorous, but maybe a challenge, as you've stated, you want to see Lakewood grow. And I had an idea the other day, fascinated me, there's a piece of property on Ridge Road, it's a very nice, open lot, and I would challenge you to work with the Lake County YMCA, and see if Lakewood can't get the dream house one of these years. Thank you.
Don, we're going to that. Would anyone else like to address the City Council? Yes.
My name is Shadrana Chapman, I don't know if this is the one. Anyway, my concern is, I live on...
We had your address real quick, I'm sorry, first.
Yeah, 1851 East 96th Street.
Thank you.
On my street, there's a lot of truck holes, and that's a concern, so I was wondering, because it's a high traffic, and then the park is up that way, too, so I was wondering if we can get it repaved, because it hasn't been that way in a while. And also, I live on Robin Dale, too, my house is on East 96th, but I also live on Robin Dale. And Robin Dale, on, there's a new, it was a new construction, I forget, is that, no, Kataan Katawa. When they built the house, they put a hole in the street, nobody said anything, and it went on summer, not filled it, some complained about that, too. So I was wondering if that can get done, or, you know, address it. And I would like, you know, how would you, how would a person go about putting, or dedicating a street to a deceased person? My parents have lived out here 50 years, and my mom just recently died last month, so I would just like Robin Dale to have, like, Chapman under it, or something like that.
I'm not sure about that process, if anybody aware of that, how that process works? We'll have to look into that and get back to you on that.
Okay. And then, not since my mom and dad expired, they have a lot across the street of 1844 Robin Dale, and that was will to me. However, I want to make part of it like a garden, and also like a little, like a hot tub or something there. Is there kind of, any kind of regulations, or can I do that? I don't know what to build on right now.
I'm going to go back to a couple things. On the, on the potholes, I think, I'm sure Service Director Dan Rosha will take a look at it this week, to go see if he can fill those potholes on the street. Person I talked to about the regulations will be Building Commissioner Sack, who I'll be able to talk to over there, he can talk to you after this meeting about what other regulations are for that.
And then my next one is, I was just concerned, well, I've been living out here all my life, too. Started kindergarten at Lakewood High School, way back when kindergarten was at the high school, but anyway. From Rockefeller to Warden, I've noticed all these years, there's not many Christmas lights and wreaths in that little section. I don't know if it's because it's the black section, or what, but that's a concern of mine now. And then, I wanted to know if there's any kind of government nonprofit funds or organization, so that maybe we could build something, or get some of the houses in that little area renovated.
Anything else I could address, you guys? Go ahead.
My name is Jeanne Schimmelmann, 536 S. Marley. I was here at the November meeting, I realized 2018 will be a challenge, but financials. So I'd like to address and see whether we're doing anything about that PR issue. I was told in November, we couldn't do anything, because it was too close to the lectures. You addressed it, the law director, and said that that was not possible, we can't take it up at that time. I'd like to see if we're going to take it up now, since we have new elections, and we have new people, and I think it's a concern. I think the people of Lakewood need to know that our council are using their Dallas widely. I hope you take that into consideration.
I'm glad to answer that, of course, because I know none of us took benefits, when we signed all the papers for direct deposit and employment and whatnot, and I didn't take any benefits, I don't believe anyone else did.
Then don't you think it should be off the books?
The problem starting with this is that, within 30 days, we couldn't pass an ordinance, that ordinance was passed, or failed, 12 days before. Had we voted on it and approved it 12 days before... Had we voted on it and approved it 12 days before, it still wouldn't have gone into effect on January 1st, 2022. So we have four years to pass an ordinance, but we can't change the current council. We can't change it going forward until, no, until the next council comes along.
For a certain period of time before the next election for the council people. So for four years, it's locked in that ordinance is on the books. There's nothing that can be done for the next four years, but it can go back at any time.
But they'll be elected to take.
Right, but it can't come into effect until the next term of council people. So even if we did an ordinance today, let's say this council decided to change the ordinance where healthcare benefits weren't available for them, it doesn't affect their four-year term. It wouldn't go into effect until the next four-year term. And that's Ohio law too. So if I can. And I think what they've done, I mean, kind of hazredressed that issue since they voluntarily have in effect passed that, they can pass the ordinance, but by each one electing not to take insurance, it's had the same effect as.
Well, we thank you, but I don't think that was ever made known to the community. And so it's still kind of out there and maybe somehow we could let it be known that you have decided not to take advantage of that ordinance. Because I still hear people complaining about it.
Pointing the direction of this video after this meeting and they can read the minutes and listen to the recording, but no one had taken help on it.
Very good. Thank you.
With your also recognition, we will over the next, within this year, I think our first topics are high priority topics are the budget, but I think we will get into this over the next year of moving council benefits going forward for future councils.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address City Council? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I've got an observation. My name's Lou Hudak. I live at 828 Lloyd Road. A graduate of Ward Road.
Hold on one second, sir.
Can you please spell your name? I'm sorry.
H U D A C K O.
Thank you.
And I've got an observation. I went to, I came to this town in 55. I was a graduate of Ward Road School, went to Woodland High, went to Lakewood Community, went to Garfield Senior. I eventually left the city in 79, went to Texas for employment, spent 37 years in Texas. I am back. I purchased a home here. What I'm seeing is that there's not enough, and explain to me because I don't know, I have been here many years, but like we can't hold people here, businesses here, people here, families here. There's got to be something to entice them. And I seen some of the things that are happening, the free deal, thing of yours being proposed and yeah, that's great. Christmas here, I saw that. They brought communities together, brought people together. We've got to do something to entice businesses to come to this area. You got a big building sitting right here and in on Ward Road. What are we doing with that? It's vacant now. Is there any, is there anything in the plan to try to get it filled? I don't know. I'm kind of appalled at the fact that I came back after 35 years and all these buildings are empty, but when I left, they were all full. And I don't know what transition happened in those 35 years. But it's just an observation. And I mean, if I'm here to help, if I can help in any way to entice people to come here, I do that all the time.
Appreciate it. Councilwoman Casskey.
In regards to the building, we were not told when exactly they were going to be vacating it. Like tonight is really the first time that we've heard, so you can't find someone to fill the spot when you don't know when it's going to be available.
I understand. So that was a great.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But also along with that, it's an antiquated building and so I understand it's going to be difficult to fill. There are two sections of the building.
Okay.
And there's a walkway that serves as like an umbilical cord. All of the heating and air conditioning is in one half and you need that for the other half. And also, from what we have been told, the building is owned by.
New York.
Yeah, there's like a group in New York, like you had a mutual other something that's like just a line item on your thing. And so there's no genuine interest in ownership. So we don't know what's going to come of that, but hopefully we will find someone, an economic developer that will really work for the city and be a go-getter and solve some of these problems.
And then we'll add to that, I've spoken with folks from the Lake County Port Authority. They are aware of the issue. I've mentioned it to Congressman Joyce during my meetings with him. There are some, the brownstone or brownfield brands, I can't remember which one it is, but it helps with asbestos-ridden buildings, which that is. And we know there's an issue with, you've got to have a new, I think it looks good, but it has some bad parts to it. I don't think it looks bad, it's some good parts. We've got to think positive here. I've been talking with a lot of business owners, property owners, as many as I can over the past month. Again, it's, we've only been, just got started here. We know there's a disconnect between those parties. So we're in the process of trying to bring them together to try to remedy some of those situations. There has been a couple of small businesses move in recently. It's not going to do anything to the budget necessarily. It's not going to move the arrow, but nonetheless, it's starting to fill up just a little bit. But we are aware of those issues and working on it.
I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Can we get your phone number after? Sure.
Anybody else like to talk, anything for the City Council? Seeing no Mark on the participation bills. Any committee reports? I'd like to call a finance meeting for Tuesday, January 16th at 7:00 PM to discuss the 2018 buyer safer grant. 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 16th. Seeing no committee reports, any commission reports? Seeing no old business, move on to new business. New business A, Mayor's appointment of Mary Bobanik to the People's Beautiful Commission.
Yes, just missed one last week with Council approval. Would like to appoint Mary Bobanik to the People's Beautiful Commission, the term to expire 12/31/2019.
To affirm the mayor's appointment of Mary Bobanik to the People's Beautiful Commission with.
Term to expire 12/31/19.
Moved by Councilwoman Casskey, seconded by Councilwoman. We affirm the mayor's appointment of Mary Bobanik to the People's Beautiful Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Discussion? Send it to the boardroom.
Yanella?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dvorsky? Levon?
Yes.
Sackens?
Yes.
Alota?
New business B, reevaluating property behind bridle path. Anybody want to evaluate or?
Well, when Engineer and I spoke, you know, the challenge, we believe, because that was drawn up quite a long time ago. It's a very steep ravine because they had proposed maybe 60 houses back there to be extremely expensive. But again, we just thought, hey, it's been quite a long time, maybe 15 years since anyone really looked at that, longer than that. So we just said, hey, let's put it out there to the property developers, even if it's not full development, there's land back there that we're not using, even if it ends up being three or four houses, step in the right direction. Then we looked at the area Lloyd Road and Clayton next to the community gardens there and over in that area, there's just big chunks of land, it's, nothing's happening. So we said, hey, let's send it out again to commercial property developers, see if there's any interest from anybody. While we get through the budget and some of the more important things, then we can circle back. If there's, if there's no interest, we can take a different direction. We just figured, put it out there, we'll work on everything else and see if anyone likes to go from there.
Councilwoman Casskey.
If you're looking at property to be developed, you might also want to consider the property behind Fairview, Fairway, oh, what does that one called?
Fairbridge.
Fairbridge.
Okay, we did discuss that. I think that's even worse with the grade.
Okay, and then also in regards to bridle path, we had discussed that to some degree the last council in the fall, I believe. And one of the challenges for creating a new development within the city, if you want to create something of any size, is that you have to remember that our city services are already being taxed because we don't have enough staff in service department, fire department, police department. Sewers department would have to take care of all the additional streets that would be put in and the police and fire, obviously. I believe the city is also responsible for the sewers and all that. It's a huge expense for the city and maintaining the roads also. You have to remember that although we want to bring new people in, I'm sure there are other areas we can probably discuss in a committee, but the amount of income tax that you bring in, you can't even come up with a general idea because if you work in a city that has charges the same income tax that our city does, you get credited for it. So you may not be actually generating very much income at all. Plus in addition, that bridle path area is currently used on green space and if you want to do any kind of building, it would have to go to the voters and someone would have to go around and get signatures and have it put on the ballot and there would have to be a special election and the residents would decide whether or not it would remain in the space or the city would be allowed to sell it. But we have other properties in the city that I believe are currently good for developing, maybe something you could add to that property that we had discussed long ago, some kind of.
Well, that's fine. We looked at city owned property to begin with. I understand there's hurdles with all these things, but we'll address those when they come up. Someone may offer us $5 million for one of those properties. We don't know, but we'll cross that bridge when it comes to fruition if it does.
How do you be aware of it?
Oh, we are. We had an hour-long conversation about those properties.
We will put the property behind bridle path into the committee of the whole. Parking issue, Nell's Park, Mayor.
Yeah, again, Tom and I talked about that. Joe's aware of it, some of the residents over there, it's just a dangerous interpass. Cars are parked on the street and during rush hour, people are trying to cut through and cars are stopped and you can't fit three vehicles through there. So it's dangerous. People are trying to speed by and you can't really see anything. People are parked on the street, got a kid tries to cross the park.
It's not a normal street. It's not a normal street. Probably 22 to 24 feet.
It's tight though and it's just, I mean, I was on somebody's porch and complaining about it five minutes later, but the problem happened.
Is there currently a sign for parking within, like no parking between these hours or?
No, there's a two-hour parking limit currently. That's all there is.
I could talk about if you're going to use the park, can we make some access into the park there and have a parking area for the park? But you were explaining that there was a skating.
There used to be a skating pond. I did talk to Pete about that. I listened to drawings that we've drawn years ago, so it's something we could take a look at.
I mean, that gives someone a place to go. Look if we can put stop signs or change the limit. I don't. The last thing you want to do is sit here and talk about China or Israel or.
Okay, we'll put the parking issue in Nell's Park into the committee of the whole as well. New business D, exploring board docs, Mayor.
Yeah, again, as Mr. Martin explained, it's cost saver, it's more efficient. It's, Pink has to, well, say she prints everything out and then have to change something, she's got to reprint everything. It's, we're trying to save money and be more efficient.
We'll put exploring board docs into the committee of the whole. New business E, RFP for economic development firms.
Yes, so you know, this is sort of the interesting thing because as you have mentioned also, we're really looking to, to think about the future economically here and it's a big picture. So it's not just, you know, what we can develop with the land we own or what we can develop haphazardly, trying to piecemeal things. We need, in my opinion, a city plan or just, you know, plan going forward, an overall plan. And there are firms that are really great at doing that. So we don't necessarily have to pay for them. I know it's a cost, certainly it's a cost, but it's not a bad idea, I think, to bring a few of the top firms to the table to give us their idea of what we really can do or what we can think about doing. So I would suggest starting there, like coming up with a few of the big firms, having them come, put out an RFP, a request for them to come and give us a proposal about what they see. Do a little investigative work on what we've got here and then let's hear their opinions on where they think we can go quickest and the most efficiently to kind of rev up the economic situation here. And then there's all kinds of other ideas that can come from that. I mean, other cities have done it and I think, you know, we've got to start somewhere. So let's start thinking about, you know, an overall plan with respect to attracting millennials, with respect to attracting businesses, et cetera. For the future, yeah, we really have to sort of redirect.
We'll put economic development firms, RFPs, into the Economic Development Equal Avenue redevelopment committee. Seeing no other new business, no ordinances and no resolutions, move on to other legislation. Ms. Lance? Annika motion to move into executive session. Summon.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Jorski, seconded by Councilwoman Casskey, move into executive session. Send it to the boardroom.
Yanella?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hattens?
Yes.
Alota? Yes.
We'll reconvene in five minutes.